This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting for November 27th, 2018. To begin this evening as we always do, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public that are here in attendance who wish to address the board may do so. You also are welcome to leave a question or a comment at a table by the door with agendas, also as cards, and you can leave a question or a comment for a future answer from the board or the superintendent. But if any members of the public in attendance this evening would like to make a statement or ask a question, you are welcome to do so. I ask that when you recognize you step to the podium and give us your name and address. So, anyone here that would like to speak this evening? Heather?
Hi, I'm Heather Colain. I live at 382 Hollywood Ave. And I just had a question relating to the open forum from a couple of weeks ago. I wanted to say, one, I appreciated it. Two, I was just wondering if you could fill us in a little bit on what is the next step with the brainstorming, the ideas that were written down on the sheets?
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for the question, Heather. And I'll turn it over to Dr. McGowan. I will, for those that may be watching us that aren't fully familiar. At our last meeting, we held our meeting at French Road, and then immediately following the meeting, we had one of our two Board of Education Community Forums for the year. And that forum was a little bit different that evening. We did provide updates to those who attended, and we did have good attendance, actually probably the most we've ever had, had a community forum evening, and we do appreciate that. But we did provide updated information on our K-12 facilities project and on our diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives. And then after those presentations, we broke the group into two smaller groups where it was really designed as a listening event, to try to take information and input from residents that were there on any matter, really, whether it was brought up that evening. And we did, as you mentioned, take down written, in written detail, all of the ideas or thoughts expressed that evening. And I will turn it over to Dr. McGowan to talk about some next steps.
Sure. So we're going to take all that, Heather, and put it into one document, just all the raw comments and data that came back off of the two charts. And we'll publish that along with some type of response to those items. We're trying to play with what the best format for that is, the best way to put it together if it looks like, for example, a frequently asked questions document, something like that. And whether it makes sense just to post that, put that out, make it available, or present it in December. It's the first time we've used that type of format, so trying to come up with the most effective way to communicate that out. So I'd expect sometime in December for us to be able to get that feedback out, back out to people. And I'll email you specifically if you'd like to when we have that put together.
Thank you.
Yeah, we definitely, we had talked about that previously, and we definitely plan to. Some of the feedback was of the suggestion type, if you will, but many of the items that night were specific questions or thoughts to be determined or to be considered. So we need to put it in the proper format to, number one, inform the community that wasn't there that evening, and then, number two, answer what can be answered that evening. And some of it may just be information taken into consideration to help inform decision-making moving forward. So, but we do, and thank you for asking, and thank you for participating that evening. Is there anyone else this evening who would like to ask the board to make a comment? All right, then. We'll move on to the agenda for this evening. May we have approval of our agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Jolene and seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. First up, speaking at the November 13th meeting, motion please for approval of minutes from that meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Christina. Does anyone have anything to add or correct or delete from those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then we'll move into our principal reports for this evening, and we'll begin this evening with Brighton High School and Dr. Hall. You can't always go from youngest to oldest.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Dr. Hall. I meant the grade level youngest from oldest. I wasn't casting any...
So we've been here since before Halloween, so started out with our Halloween picture. I'm sure you'll see many others from the other buildings. We had our therapy dog costumes out because we are all about therapy dogs at the high school, and there's little Adkis in the middle there enjoying himself. He was a Viking that day. But we had a lot of fun. If you, hopefully you've already heard, but again, this year for 2018-19, the Trapezoid Galaxy and our Crossroads, all of our publication magazines received All Gold Awards, Best All Around Publications of New York State from Syracuse University, who puts on this conference every October. And we're just excited about that. Again, they work really hard, the publications are absolutely incredible, and to receive, you know, the recognition of Syracuse University's publication school is quite incredible. So we just want to give kudos to all of them. Jed Coons, the Galaxy Advisor, Molly Healy, our Trapezoid Advisor, and Crossroads, Jenny Lynn Pickering, doing a great job. Our annual mix-it-up day, so this year, we did it, we had a little more strict regulations for if you come down for the ice cream social. At the end of it was part of our Purple Week that we had for kindness, and if you were going to get some ice cream, you had to sit down with other students, and we placed you in a particular group that you didn't get to choose. And there were cards with questions you could ask one another, and there were a lot of good conversations. It's definitely a forced conversation, a forced atmosphere to sit with other people that you don't know, but certainly generated some conversations, and we're hoping maybe created some new friendships or at least, you know, a couple friendly faces in the hallway. Our Friends of Rachel group puts that on with our care team, so thank you to them. We had our seventh annual Rock to Change. They, well, actually, they're biannual, one in the fall, one in the spring, and we hosted this year's Rock to Change, as many of you already know. I want to give a lot of credit to Chris Kance, the Mosaic Club, who helped really spearheading this, the event, and planning the agenda. In that crowd are almost 500 students from all over the greater Rochester area, and our Black Student Union with Amy Malloy, and Lance Mitchell from Friends of Rachel. And there were several administrators. We were involved in the planning with them, got to do some introductions, a lot of work with the kids. But once the event began, after the guest speaker, the kids pretty much ran the show. And they designed the activities, had guidance from us, but really took it upon themselves and did amazing work. And if you were, if you actually get to watch them take Q and A from students from all over the area, our students, I think, felt pretty confident in where they are with conversations about not only race, but this, this year's theme was intersectionality and opening up to all different diversities, from sexuality to race, gender, religion. And our kids were pretty well-versed and have done a lot of work on it. Very proud of them, and to see what they accomplished on that day, and tons of positive feedback from the area schools who were there. So just want to give a big shout-out to all of them, and thank you. Here's some of the student presenters. These four students, mostly from Mosaic Club, were presenting actually to probably the largest group. That was the, there were three student breakout groups. And our kids this year, for the first time in all these summits, created a beginners group, an intermediate group, and an advanced group. And they all had a different topic and kind of where kids felt comfortable with where they were with diversity in conversations. They chose where they wanted to be. This was the advanced group, and BSU and some of our Mosaic Clubs ran that as well. But this one, they're really empowering students. Okay, if you feel, you know, you've done a lot in your schools already, getting them to talk about what they've done in their schools, how they've approached administration, their faculty, other students to bring those changes to their buildings, and had a very, had some role-playing going on between students and administrators and playing those roles. All, again, run by our students. And that was kind of a big group picture. Not everybody's in it, but the majority did a nice job. It was a great day. Still continuing Natural Helpers, that's been going on probably for over, almost close to four decades now. Not many schools, I mean, funding was cut for Natural Helpers. It's an overnight, two-night retreat. We do this down in Canadagua at one of the parks, and kids stay Thursday night, Friday night, and then leave on Saturday. And basically, this whole training is developed, these students are chosen by their peers. And it's not necessarily a popularity contest. It's students from all walks of life who get chosen based on somebody who the students recognize that they might approach them if they had a problem. And so these students are trained on how to deal with day-to-day problems and issues that kids have. Again, we have upperclassmen who instruct the students with the guidance from Mike Bonadonna and the faculty chaperones who attend each year. And they also, one of their last things that they do is talk about the more serious problems, and when those come, you need to know when to take it off your shoulders and give it to somebody else who can, you know, is more trained and, you know, who could deal with maybe the more severe types of issues. But it's nice to have all of these new, there's 40-plus kids who are now filtered throughout the high school to join the 80 other students who were trained over the last two years who are still in the building, to be there for students and, you know, keep their eyes open. They do that all year and report things that they're concerned about and give us a heads-up. Again, just a great group. So quarter one just finished. It's unbelievable. We're already, we're maybe two or three, two weeks into quarter two already. I just wanted to share with you, you know, I've been presenting this since back in 2012, our failure data for this quarter. We're at our second lowest failure rate. Last year, we were under 10%, which was the first time in history. We had under 10% of the students failing one or more classes. We're at 10.6, which is the second lowest. And I wanted to highlight the freshmen in particular. 8.4% of the students, it was 25 students failed one or more classes compared to 50, you know, double that back in 2010-11. So a lot of new programs, a lot of interventions with our freshmen, and just nice to see it play out. So quarter one grades are out there. College Mondays continue. We have a Blue Ribbon Celebration. You're all invited. You should have received an invitation. Be in the gym on the 7th, and a lot of events coming up right through the holidays, concerts and all sorts of things. Don't forget, Rob. Our big reunion is on the 21st in the VHS cafeteria at 3:00. So, any questions?
No, that sounds great, Tom. Thank you very much. And again, congratulations on the Blue Ribbon designation. It's fantastic, and I know things went well in Washington, DC, and we appreciate, we're very proud of all the work being done, so thank you.
Thank you.
12 Corres Middle School, Rob Thomas.
That was a great last picture to put up there. I'm sure embarrassed the viewing audience to some extent. Yes, we had Halloween at the middle school too, and the kids were actually as excited as the staff, and we had a great participation in a costume contest for the staff. Mrs. Padilla won it. She was a macaroni and cheese. Did a great job. The Mosaic Club at our school is the little brother and sister of the Mosaic Club at the high school, and it is a great combination because Katie Kance, his husband, Chris Kance, runs it at the high school, Katie does at our school. And they hosted a speak, or a presentation with Migrant Ministries in October. Well-attended, to talk about all the things migrant workers are doing in and around this area to put food really on our tables. Well-attended and very interesting presentation. Zero Waste Initiative continues at the middle school. We're so far ahead of where we were at this time last year. I'm very proud of the kids. And not only the kids that are participating and doing the right thing, but so many of the student helpers that take time during lunch to help direct their peers. Sarah Quirk has been an outstanding part of that as well. The eighth graders took three separate field trips by team to the Memorial Art Gallery to become an expert in a piece of art that they will showcase on December 11th, starting at 5:00 PM for a night at the Memorial Art Gallery. It's a, it's a project they're doing in conjunction with a book they're reading, "Okay for Now" in their English classes, and we're really excited to see them on the 11th. Veterans Day Assembly was held for 7th grade this year, which fit in nicely with the 7th grade activities, including their Washington, DC trip and their participation in the Honor Flight Assembly. One of the Honor Flight veterans was there and encouraged the kids again to write letters. We saw and heard a lot about the memorials that we'll be visiting when we get to DC, and it's awful nice to have local veterans present to our kids, local, as in Brighton residents, Brighton employees, Brighton graduates. The one gentleman in the bottom-left corner there, Stuart Bloom, is actually a Purple Heart recipient, and he brought the medal to show everybody. Kristen Halligan and Martina, or, excuse me, Maria Martinez helped organize an ESAL Thanksgiving celebration for all the students in their program and outside of their program. We had over 100 people participate this year in a really great early Thanksgiving to warm us up a week before the actual Thanksgiving. Great staff and student participation. The Hairspray Musical was at VHS the weekend before Thanksgiving, Friday evening and Saturday afternoon. And it's always amazing to watch rehearsals and wonder how they're ever going to pull it off, and then see the show on Friday night or Saturday afternoon with the sets and the costumes, the timing, and all the special things, things that the kids do. Great, great performances. Our Fall Concert season started the Monday before Thanksgiving with Concerts at French Road, which was a nice venue for the combined chorus, 7th and 8th grade, the 7th and 8th grade orchestra, and our TCMS show choir, who will also be the student showcase at our next faculty meeting. Great participation in the performing arts with a lot of concerts coming up. Please check your PTSA calendars for all the dates. Our Heart and Soul is the little brother, or, excuse me, little sister, actually, of our Girls on the Run program, and these girls participated in a Practice 5K the Monday before Thanksgiving. And they'll actually run their first 5K in an official race at MCC on December 9th, Saturday morning at 10:00 AM. I've been invited to join them, although I don't want to be lapped by all of them, so I'm not sure if I'll participate. They're doing a great job, and the program not only builds fitness, but also builds confidence with these kids. Some of the important dates coming up, we have visitors from Odan, Israel, coming next week, and touring a lot of our schools. We have a young, a woman named Neda coming to the middle school, and she has a full two mornings of events on Monday and Wednesday, and we're really excited about continued collaboration with our friends in Israel. Our TCMS meeting with the principal is next Wednesday morning at 8:00 AM, and it will feature seven different teachers to talk about how they're using technology as a tool for instruction. So if you can come by the TCMS library, 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM on Wednesday morning next week, you'll hear a lot about what they're doing in the classroom with the students. I mentioned a lot of the upcoming band and chorus orchestra concerts. Reminder that there's a half-day dismissal on the 14th of December, and then, of course, our holiday recess begins before we blink an eye. Thanks. Any questions tonight?
Looks great, Rob. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up, we'll move down to French Road Elementary. Principal Allison Rieu.
Hello.
Hello.
So we too will start off with some Halloween pictures. So, picture of Deanna and myself, and my favorite costumes. If I had a vote at my school, our art teachers dressed as gnomes. And Melissa Rowland, it looked pretty good. They make their costumes every year, really awesome. Our kids were great, too. We had to move our parade indoors, but nonetheless, it was still fun and exciting for our kids parading around the school for a little bit, showing off their costumes and, you know, being greeted by their families and parents. We had our first movie night of the year. The picture doesn't do it justice. It was the biggest movie night we've had yet. We had the kids vote on a movie on Election Day, so it was the Battle of the Sequels, and they voted for Incredibles 2. It might have helped that it just came out that week on DVD, and I don't know. I think also we had a lot of third graders, which was awesome, but we were really packed in there. I don't think we could have fit another person. It was great, though. Some of our third graders in Mrs. Tufts' class Skyped with an author from Storywork. So she wrote an article about trampoline parks and if they were good or bad, and the kids wanted to Skype with her. So Mrs. Tufts had the kids write their opinion pieces, and then the author made time to Skype with the kids. They read their pieces to the author, and she got to give them some feedback on their writing about her piece, which was pretty cool. So there's a picture of the author, Cara Corden, in Mrs. Tufts' class. And some of our fourth graders took an amazing field trip a little over a week ago to the Maker Fair, which is a fair for kids that, it's associated with Nightskate Conference that a lot of our teachers go to, but the kids get to experience it through some science and technology and math and invention-type activities throughout the morning. So we had some fourth-grade classes go for the first time this year, and it was pretty awesome. Mrs. Fallon and Mrs. Pettit took their classes, and you can see some pictures of the kids doing some exploring. They were helping to make, in the picture on the right, a giant balloon exhibit, like the ones that you would see in the Sibley Building that they do every year. So the kids were excited about that. Some more pictures of our kids there. The speaker that was there was Jason Latimer, who is really pretty amazing. If you've never heard of him, he is a magician and curator of Impossible Science. And somehow, just by luck of the draw, or maybe that Debbie was handing out our seats, we were in the front row. We didn't realize that we would be, we were in the front row, and all of the kids in this huge auditorium full of people, all of the volunteers that got pulled up to stage to do the Impossible Science were Fraz kids. So we were so excited. It was like they were with a celebrity. The kids are still talking about this day, and it was a pretty amazing experience. Also, along with science, our third and fourth grade students and teachers are starting with some new science kits this year, some Smithsonian kits that the teachers, and the kids especially, have been raving about. So our third graders are looking at habitat changes and protecting animals when that happens, and our fourth grade students are looking at providing energy to people's homes. So check out some pictures from Mr. Ranny's class. Comments I've heard from kids and teachers are just, you know, kids are asking a lot of questions. They're really engaged in the science. They don't want science to stop. They want to do more science in the classroom. So starting to build this curiosity more and questioning, and our teachers have been working hard at learning the new curriculum, learning the new kids, and they've put in a ton of work and effort, too, but it's really paid off for our kids. Here are some friends in Mrs. Fallon's class. And our third grade followed up their Habitat Unit with a visit from the Zoo Mobile, which was new this year for us, but the Zoo Mobile from Seneca Park Zoo came and was able to chat with the kids about habitats in line with their science curriculum and bring some animals for them, too. So that was really exciting. And I mentioned this a few, maybe, maybe last month when I was here, I can't remember, but our fifth grade had a door decorating contest. So I was going to throw in a few pictures of our fifth-grade doors, so I'll go through this quickly because I just couldn't choose, because it felt terrible to leave some fifth graders out of this. They did an amazing job putting together doors around growth mindset and positive thinking. So as all our French Road kids walked around the school, they would see lots of different doors that kind of would hopefully think about a growth mindset. And also on Election Day, our third and fourth and fifth graders voted on the doors, which one they thought they liked the best. Here are some more. Rogue Highness, Anything's Popsicle. Lots of awesome doors here. And our winner was Mrs. Tellex's class, Donut Give Up. So it's hard to not pick the donut on the door, but everybody did an awesome job. Upcoming events this week, we have PTSA meeting with the principal. We have Sarah Quirk coming from Impact Earth to talk about our Zero Waste Initiative, to share with families what's happening at our school and how they can support at home. And then we're getting into our concert season. We have a concert coming up already next week for our Red Band and Orchestra. We have No School on the 7th for our conferences. Our Book Fair is starting the week of the 10th. The Book Fair will run for our kids for a few days, but for our families on the 11th, we will have a family night from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in line with our Blue Band and Chorus Concert, which is the same night, so families can come to the school once and stop at the Book Fair and then head to a concert. Also, PJ's and Popcorn with me at 6:30. So I'm going to read a story to anyone that wants to come hear a story. Don't know what it's going to be yet, so you might have to come and check it out. Half-day for conferences on December 14th. We have our Math Team meeting on the 19th for anyone who's new to Math Team, who wants to learn more about it before that starts up next year. We'll do our PJ Day, and that takes us right up to break. So, thanks.
Sprint. Thank you very much. And wrapping up reports this evening, Matt Tappin and Council Rock.
All right, so the big reveal for us is, I didn't get great pictures of kids, but I have a couple pictures of us. We were Elephant and Piggy, Mrs. Jeffries and myself, and then we snapped a picture with the pigeon from Don't Let the Pigeon Drive the Bus, who happened to be there, so it was a little bit of a theme. But we were able to get outside for both of our, I don't know what was happening on the other end of Brighton, but we were able to get outside for both of our, both of our parades, so that was good. We also had Grace Lynn at Council Rock. She did three different assemblies. The two of them were kindergarten and first grade, so this is a picture of the first assembly with kindergarten and first grade, and she guided them through the publishing process and how long the publishing process can take and how long, like the minimum it can take. And each of these students came up and volunteered and were part of, one of the parts of that publishing process, so the editors and the proofreaders and the printers and all of the things that go into creating the book. And she had the really large piece of paper, is actually a print copy of one of her first books that she has that folds all up, and it's the first copy that an author gets back. And then in second grade, she talked a little bit about, I have to get the word, the name, Behind the Year of the Dog, which is one of her books that all of our second-grade teachers read aloud to the second grade in preparation for her visit, and she did some artwork with it, but then also talked about where she got the ideas for that and really sparked, sparked the ideas of our kids. And I happened to have a conversation with some parents the next week who said that she's not sure what we did, but her, she had two children, one in second grade and one in kindergarten, who wrote all weekend long, and the kindergartner didn't quite get, although he was in the assembly, the publishing process because he was pushing his mom to send it away, and he wanted it published that night. And she said, she said, "I'm pretty sure it takes longer." And Grace Lynn was pretty clear that the minimum amount of time you can do to get a published book is one year, but he didn't quite get that one year. He was thinking one night. But we were excited to hear that they were working all weekend on writing, and it's exactly what we hope. And then we had a group of second graders who applied and got chosen to have lunch with her, and that was a really special experience for them. And she just was a really wonderful, engaging author. And again, we thank the PTSA for their help with that and their help in organizing, and Adele Motzkowicz, who's our librarian who helped organize. So it was just a great day. On November 20th, we celebrated a Council Rock School Related Professionals Day, which is a kind of holiday for, through NICEIT, to celebrate all of our non-teaching personnel. And Mrs. Jeffries and I threw a big luncheon that was really well-received for our TAs and all of our SRPs, whoever fits into that category. So just a really great day to celebrate those people who make such a huge difference in the lives of our kids and our families, and also for our teachers in supporting them. So thanks to them. So I can't get through a presentation without talking about Habits of Mind, so Habits of Mind continues to pop up in our cafeteria, and we are really linking the habits of mind to cafeteria behaviors, so managing impulsivity, taking responsible risks by trying new foods, responding with wonderment and awe by talking and eating with our friends, and then listening with understanding and empathy. But even more exciting than this is that, if you remember the last time I presented, several of my teachers met the guru of Habits of Mind, so they've been connecting with her. And when we were doing our goal three years ago, we had looked into becoming Habits of Mind School, but it was pretty costly. It was pretty cost-prohibitive. They started a conversation with her, and she has adopted us, basically, and waived several fees, so that we're hoping in the next three years we will become an international, we are applying and hoping to become an international Habits of Mind School at Council Rock. So with all the work that we've been doing, she said it would be a shame for us not to do that, and she's kind of taken us under her wing, so we're excited about that. And then a variety of turkey writing and art for Thanksgiving. This just struck me as I walked around right before Thanksgiving. So on the very left, you have kind of a traditional "I am thankful for," which you may see often. In the center, our second graders were doing research and writing about turkeys. This one in particular got me, that when a turkey is stressed or frightened, the skin on his or her neck will change color, just like humans. We call it blushing. They do the same thing, so I thought that was interesting. Who knew that a turkey blushed? And then on the right-hand side is a how-to writing on how to cook a turkey, and I could have used that at my house this week. So I just thought it was interesting, all the different takes and all the great creative artistic work that kids are doing around that holiday, so. And then finally, we had a really great combination meeting with Special Ed Department and Council Rock, meeting with the principal, Promoting Independence in Your Child. Dr. Privadati, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that name, she is just a great resource that we've kind of tapped into. She came and talked about how to promote independence in children across the board. It was a great presentation. We did tape it, so we're hoping to be able to have it up on the website, because we know not everyone can attend when we have these meetings. know not everyone can attend when we have these meetings, we try to vary the times, but Eric Gruner was there to be able to tape it. She serves on our Wellness Committee with us as a parent rep, and she just comes with a wealth of knowledge about wellness and overall health, kind of spiritual and thinking. So it just was a really great, received very well as well. This Wednesday, we have our Picture Retake Day, just a message to the parents who might be watching it live, we are hoping for the pictures today, we are hoping that they'll come tomorrow, because we realize that the Picture Retake Day is but a week away, and we're hoping to be able to get those home so people can make those choices. Next Friday, we have No School for Just K through 5, because of parent-teacher conferences. The following Friday, so I'm going to say this slowly, is an early release day, afternoon kindergartners will come to school in the morning. So they will come to school, but they will come to school in the morning, and I know that is, will blow your mind, that you're going to be coming in the morning. And all of our students that day will be dismissed at 11:30. The final Friday before the holiday break is our traditional Stay in Your PJs and Read Day, so we're looking forward to that, and then of course we have our holiday break. So, questions?
Thank you very much, Matt, we appreciate it. And again, to our principals, thank you all for sharing your buildings and all your folks with us, we do, we do appreciate that opportunity. We have a number of five different policies this evening, Board. They are second reads on five different policies that we approved, I believe all five of these we approved first read at our November 13th meeting. So this evening, I guess we'll start in order, maybe we have a motion for approval of second read and therefore adoption, Policy 5140 in the Non-Instructional Business Operations Section Administration of the Budget.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Karen and seconded by Larry. This was, we discussed this briefly at the November 13th meeting, this is the phasing in of the requirement for school districts to submit annually a much more detailed statement of total funding and then broken down by individual buildings, and that we'll be having to do that beginning a year out, so. Does anybody have anything further on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion please for second read approval of Policy 6214 Personnel with regard to Registration and Professional Development.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Jolene, seconded by Christina. And this one was a change regarding, a change in the law regarding school business leaders, and there was consistency and clarity needed with regulation, and that's what's done here. Does anyone have anything further on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion please on Policy 7512, second read approval under students and student physicals.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Karen. This was the one that also hit conflicting timing in regulation and law with regard to dental certificates and health certificates, so this brings that back together and request it at the same time. Anyone have anything additional or further on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion please for approval of second read, Policy 7260, again, the student section designated of designation of person in parental relation.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Karen and seconded by Larry. This one was a change in the general obligations law, it had to do with a period of time, 12 months instead of six months for designation. And I don't have anything further, does anybody have anything further question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the follow, final policy, a motion please for approval, Policy 7222, student section again, having to do with diploma or credential options for students with disabilities.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Jolene, seconded by Christina. And this one was recommended for amendment, so the policy language has regular legal updates and future legal updates, because there's a consistency of those updates, and this will account for that without having to revise the policy further. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And those will now then be processed and become part of formal policy and be added to our policy manual. Motion please for adoption of our consent agenda this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Larry, a couple of items there, I make note of two different gifts this evening, we're appreciative of a gift from Lori Friedman to the Visual and Performing Arts Department of a Selmer Piccolo, and also a gift from Dr. Joseph Friedman to the Visual and Performing Arts Department of a Mapek's drum set and stool. We thank them for those gifts, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. McGowan, anything further this evening?
Nothing else.
Nothing else? Board members, anything further this evening?
No.
Then prior to our adjournment, I just will remind folks that we next meet in three weeks out, because of December schedule being a little bit different. So our next school board meeting will be on Tuesday, December 18th, in this very room, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Jolene and seconded by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, thank you everyone.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.